Good evening, everyone. This is the one school committee meeting a year which the superintendent opens the meeting because we're doing a school committee reorganization. We have a full agenda this evening, so we'll get right into the reorganization. I'd like to go ahead and motion it all for chair for next school year.
The nominee, Chris Morrison, is chair for the next school year.
You have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
There goes my short-lived chairmanship. Here you go.
Do we have a nomination, a motion for a slate for vice chair, the recording secretary, and financial secretary?
I move to, I so move.
Let me put a motion up there. I move Irene DeSisto as vice chair, Marian Sullivan as recording secretary, and Anne Mayo Shea as financial secretary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we just cut three steps out and see if you guys have time? Dr. Marshall? Mr. Chair, we are excited this evening to recognize retiring teachers. We have five teachers retiring, nine in attendance tonight, and just really want to thank them on behalf of the community and the students of Medfield for all their years of hard work. I think we have in the room a total of 278 and a half years of teaching. So, I want to extend that to you. Will you give a plaque to each teacher?
It would be my pleasure. You know, this is a bittersweet time because we wish you all the best, and we certainly will miss your experience and your veteran leadership at schools. We hope that your golf games improve and that you catch a lot of cash for whatever else that you intend to do.
It's without the common circumstance that you all deserve, but Adele Hardy with deepest appreciation for 32 years. And Kristoff, our deepest appreciation for 38 years. Carrie O'Brien's only taught for 28 years. Janice Olson, you guys have any, any of you know how long Janice Olson's been?
Forty-one.
Forty-one years.
Ninety-two.
Mary, none of my hits had you, so I don't know if I'm going to get this right. Praxis?
That's very good. Praxis?
Praxis.
I think you actually went to Praxis.
Yeah, that's close.
I just didn't have the better of the facts. Joe White, slot 15, two, 15, four, 22 years. And Jenny Woods, 18 and a half years. Got that right down to the point, you're sure about point six.
Math teacher, math teacher, I gave the half. Wish you a long and happy and healthy retirement. Congratulations.
Please come see us again. We'd love attend, we'd love company at the school committee meetings. Dr. Mars?
Our next item on the agenda is the special education parent advisory council. I think Mr. Licava is here to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Good evening, everybody. I want to start off with the CPAC summary for the year. Kate Tormi, the president of CPAC was unable to come tonight, so I'm going to speak on her behalf in regards to CPAC. She did provide some notes in your packet, and I just wanted to review those before moving on to the pupil service department. So, CPAC's main objective is to respond to requests of parents and to offer programs that are purposeful to the members and to the community. The ongoing goals of CPAC are to provide information and to bridge communication between school, home, and community. The CPAC holds monthly meetings, some of which are in-house discussions and discussions around specific items that are going on within the Medfield community, and they also bring in speakers from different areas when different topics of interest that they've heard about in the parent community have come up. So, just a quick review. The other thing that they've added to over the past couple of years to their programming is kids' nights, which have been very successful, where throughout the year they have one or two days or nights where they have an activity for the parents to take their kids to on weekend. And they've also done some great fundraising over the past couple of years. So, the fundraising they do is the kid stuff coupon books, which you may see come home in the backpacks at the elementary level. That coupon book fundraiser profited $5,000 this year, which was really, which was really great. We, every year for CPAC do a basic rights presentation in the fall, which is somebody that comes in really talks about the process of special education from a parent's perspective. A lot of times the process, when a parent is first going through it, is a little difficult to understand, and there's a lot of ins and outs, so we offer a basic rights, which is kind of a step-by-step of the process for parents that are just going through that. So, that's offered every October. In November, there was a presentation by Nadine Brakes, which was surviving adolescents. That was, that was well-attended and very informative. December, the parents and children manned a water station for the Angel Run, and there was a family pottery painting day held at Park Street Books. January had a general meeting, and then one of the things that was voted on for a scholarship coming out of CPAC was, and you just honored Angie Ty-Pattis, who's been an integrated preschool teacher for 30 years and is retiring. So, the CPAC had a lot of parents who sent their kids, that their kids went through the preschool and know Angie very well, so they actually voted to award on a yearly basis a $500 scholarship to a high school student. And so, this was, this was the first year that they awarded that in honor of Angie. In March, there was a joint event with the Medfield Music Association and the Coalition to put on the Power of Music Night, where there were, the Medfield Jazz Band collaborated with, the Berklee College of Music actually has a new program in place for students with autism, and some of the members of that came that night and collaborated with the Jazz Band and put on a presentation. April, which I'm going to touch on a little bit too, was the Special Olympics. And then, also just of note is that the department, the pupil service department in the district is always happy and thrilled to receive $300 per learning center that is donated by the CPAC on an annual basis, and that money is put toward supplies for each learning center. They're going to wrap up the year with a karate event at Personal Best Karate. So, those are the, those are the CPAC minutes. It really has, you know, they've struck a nice balance, I think, between having meetings to talk about the Medfield community as well as balancing that with speakers to come in and present on topics that are important.
Thank you.
That's CPAC. So, moving on to the kind of pupil service year review and a little bit of some of the, some of the areas of focus that we'll be, we'll be looking at next year. I just want to touch on a few different things. I want to touch on program development, which I've talked about before, but we have a few new programs that are going to be in place for next year. The Retail Initiative, which is for ELL students. I'm going to talk a little bit about professional development and assistive technology. So, the first thing I want to, want to discuss is program development. So, there's two just areas I want to highlight that have started this past, some has been in development over the past couple of years, and then we have a new program coming into place at the high school for next year. We have, over the past several years, developed what we call access programs. And those are programs now in every elementary building and the middle school, which serve students with more significant special needs. If you look back a couple of years without these programs, many of the students that are in these programs may not have been able to be served by the Medfield schools without this type of programming, and we saw a need for more intensive learning center structures, and so we built access programs throughout the elementary school. We actually started at Dale Street a couple of years ago, and then it kind of spread up and down from there based on cohorts of students and the needs that they had. We do have students now that are in current access program that head to the high school next year. So, that was the one building, we did not have a program at this point, so we went ahead and developed one. But one of the challenges we faced, especially at the high school level, was the life skills and the vocational aspect of our obligations, really, to make sure that the students that are in these programs are ready for the real world when they turn 22 years old. So, as we started to do development and talk to different consultants about coming in to help us really develop a comprehensive program, one of the things that we touched upon was that vocational piece is not something we've done before at the high school. So, we wanted to collaborate with another organization that really would help support that and make sure that we are developing our staff to understand how to, how to focus on that area. And what came out of that was a partnership program with the Except Collaborative. So, Medfield is part of the Except Collaborative, which is a group of surrounding towns that are part of an organization that develops specialized programs that are housed in different, in different public schools, but you send your students from your district. It's almost like an added district placement. This is a different model. I didn't, I didn't want to have that model here for this program. Our students are staying in the district, they're moving up to the high school. But building on the expertise that they had, what we came and developed was a true partnership program. So, the way it's going to be structured is that we're truly collaborating with staff. There will be some Except staff members there, there will be Medfield staff members that serve the program. The students from Medfield will be going up to the program, and there will be some students who are part of other Except districts that will be attending the program as well. I'm just going to, I only have one brochure, I just want to kind of take a look at it. But it is, it is, I think, a really exciting opportunity, especially at the high school, because at this point, we'll be getting the kids out in the community and start doing some job training and vocational training, and so, you know, I think it's really the time to start that transition, to talk, to think about what are we preparing them for when, when they leave us.
Matt, how many students are we talking about?
So, there will be, for next year, there'll be two Medfield students, and there'll be two to three Except students coming in. Over the, over the court, projections are, over the course of the next three years, we'll be serving upwards of 10 Medfield students in that program. We have a large cohort at the middle school right now, and so those students over the next several years will be going up. So, within the next three years, we'll be at about 10. You know, we've had a lot of conversations with Except that I want to make sure that Medfield students are served to the, to the best of our capabilities, and if we hit a point where we cannot accept other outside students coming into this program, that's the way we'll approach it. It's Medfield students first. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but it really is, because that's our responsibility. And then, you know, if we have spaces, then the Except students can come in. For next year, because we have enough slots, we won't be bringing Except students in.
Can you accommodate 10 kids in that classroom?
Well, the, it will be 10 kids. It's a little bit different at the high school level, because there'll be 10 kids tied to the program, if you want to look at it that way. So, very few times will they all be in that room. There'll be a lot of inclusion opportunities within the high school, and with the high school schedule, and based on the needs of the kids, there may be five out at once and five in the room. And then the second part of it is the job training and vocational training. So, they'll be out at work sites, quite common. Well, actually, the other benefit of partnering with Except is that we'll be using Except transportation as part of the program at no additional cost. It'll just be available to us. So, yeah, you know, 10 students is more of a number that will be attached to the program, but not in the program at one time. I think Robert talked a little bit about this space. We did build out a space which has a kitchen in it and has an academic space, and it'll be set up for, for all sorts of life skills. At the middle school, we continue to develop the co-teaching model, which was implemented in a couple of clusters this year. We were able to send staff to training throughout the year so that we can continue to advance that co-teaching model. The great thing about that is that for the trainings, you go as a team, so it's not a special ed training, it's not a general ed training. You have to go as special ed and general ed to go learn how to work together in the classroom. So, that model continues to be developed at the middle school, and we've had a lot of discussions at the elementary schools as well, as to, you know, over the next several years, bringing that model down into the elementary. I want to just touch on the ELL requirements that have come into place over the past year. I was here in the fall talking about our program review in ELL and some of the things we had to put into place. This is, this is the new requirements that are in place for all districts across the state. It's called Retail. It's Rethinking Equity in Teaching for English Language Learners. And this really stemmed out of a Department of Justice study that they did of the Massachusetts DESE, and found that ELL students were being underserved. And so, new requirements coming into place, especially with teacher training. And what the teacher training is, is by July 1st of 2016, so two years basically from now, all teachers to recertify, if they have an ELL student in their class, will have to take a 45-hour ELL endorsement class, and if they don't have ELL students in their room, they, they have to get 15 professional development credits to, in order to recertify. If they don't have that at the time, they will not be able to recertify. So, it's a, it's, it's become not only just a required training, but it's tied to the staff certification. So, we will be sending 15 teachers this coming year, and then we'll have 14 slots for the following year. We've also, in addition, been asked to host an administrator training. All administrators, any administrator that may possibly supervise or evaluate a teacher that may have an ELL student in their class, has to, has, have to, has to have this endorsement as well. So, basically, that's all content specialists and all principals. We'll be hosting that class in the fall. So, for professional development, again, we were able to bring in speakers and have our staff spend, attend multiple conferences. We focused on co-teaching quite a bit. We had a number of staff go to a school avoidance conference in anxiety disorders. But the, the other part that I wanted to touch on was our, the training that we're going to have in place that we're moving towards for our inclusion facilitators, which are our subsection of special education aides that are more highly trained and work with more intensive students. We are looking towards, there's a new certification that the state, that the National Board of, Board of Behavior Analysts has put into place called Registered Behavior Technician. And what that does is it trains the staff on ABA principles and behavior intervention in really good teaching practice with students who have more intensive needs. We've put, we've put a lot of thought into the needs of the kids, and we actually will be rolling out for all inclusion facilitators over the next two years. They'll be attending this training, and they'll be required to have this certification moving forward. So, I met with actually all of them a couple of weeks ago, and they were, they were very excited about this, because what it does is it just gives them more support on how to, how to best serve, serve the kids. It is, it's a, it's a 90-day, 30-hour class. Six of those hours are in person, and the rest of the hours are online, and it's supervised, it's supervised by our BCBA, Melissa Devine. So, and then at the end, they'll have to take the competency exam to get their certification, which is an annual certification. For technology, we continue to head in the direction of increasing our capacity with iPads and assistive technology. We've rolled out a few Chromebooks for students that require more support with typing, and the iPad wasn't, wasn't supporting that as much, and we're kind of working through the differences of the two platforms. We've also increased the software that we have in the district. We've been able to secure more copies of Boardmaker and ProLup, which did, to go, which is a voice communication system. The other major technology change that we've put into place, which has affected staff a little bit more than kids, is we have moved towards ESPED, which is an online web-based IEP and 504 monitoring, and it's really a monitoring system. So, all of our IEPs and 504s are developed and put into ESPED. We did have a similar product before. Over the past several years, what ESPED is going to do for us is it's much more streamlined. It allows us to run many more reports, so we can get a better, you know, better understanding of, you know, students who qualify for IEPs, who qualify with certain disabilities, you know, what buildings they're in, what grade levels they're in. So, it'll, it'll help us a lot better with the management reports. It also, another key aspect to it is it will allow us to, it allows us to encrypt emails. And so, now, instead of millions of copies of IEPs in paper that we send out, parents will have the option of receiving their IEPs or 504s in an email which is encrypted, and we can also give our general ed teachers access, read-only access to the IEPs in the system. So, whereas before, we used to have to make copies for all the teachers and hand them out at the beginning of the year, they'll just now have an access code, and they'll be able to go in and look at only the kids that are in that class and have access to all their information and their, and their accommodations. So, that's going to be, that's going to be a very big difference there. In addition, it talks with and collaborates with Aspen, which is the student information system. So, on a nightly basis, the information between the two systems will, will talk to each other, and any changes made in one will upload in the other one, so we can track it on both sides.
Is that, Matt, is that already in place? Did you, was that a?
We actually, yeah, we, we made the move on right after April vacation. So, the reasoning behind, we, it was, we started the transition in January, because we had to upload all the data from the current system to ESPED, and then we did a lot of quality assurance. We identified, you know, different mistakes and all that. It went live at the end of April, because the thinking was we would have a couple of months to really make the transition. We did the training with the teachers, we were able to support them for a couple of months, knowing that we come, if we did it over the summer, when we come back in September, there's so many other initiatives and trainings that they need to do for those first couple of days before the kids would get back and prepare for the kids, that we thought it was better to get a couple of months under our belt, so that when they come back, the transition happens. So, yeah, that, that went live right after, right after April break. Special Olympics is the, you may remember, we had the first, we started a chapter of five towns, Medfield, Medway, Millis, Ashland, and Holliston, and we had the first five-town event last year here in Medfield, and it was a basketball event. This year, we held it over in Medway. It was a soccer event, and we had, again, we had upwards of 75 athletes from the five towns. We've now set a full rotation. Next year, we'll be in Holliston, and it's going to be a track and field event. Usually, we hold it in, in early April, and it just is, Dr. Mars, I was able to come this year, and it just is, you know, the kids just have a great time. We kind of pull out all the stops and have mascots from different pro teams come, and the kids train for a while, and it just is, it's just an amazing event, and it's been, it's been really well-supported by the communities. So, that will, that will hopefully now be just an annual thing that we set up and have a great time at. And then I just had, you know, the CPAC, which I touched on before, I did want to say, you know, that it's great to have the collaboration of the CPAC. They really are a collaborative organization that helps me stay in touch, you know, from the parent side and make sure that if there's any things that are brewing that I haven't heard about, that, you know, we can kind of talk about it and try to address it on that side. That's what I have for now. Any other questions or, all right? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Nice job. Excellent.
Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be here tonight to talk about all the great things that are happening at Dale Street, and this is my favorite night, because it's an opportunity to share all of the wonderful things that have happened during the year. And sometimes, when you're in the midst of it, you're like, oh, we're never going to get there, we're never going to get there, we're never going to get there. But it's nice to sit down and do the school improvement plan, because then you get to see all the wonderful things that have, have been accomplished during the year. Dale Street's working on creating our dream school even before we have our new building, and here's how we're doing it. The school, I would like to first recognize all of the members of our site council. Ed Ariel and Lisa Pagli Rulo were our fifth grade parents. Erin Langton, Tracy Rogers, Corinna Driscoll were our fourth grade parents. Janice Olson, fourth grade teacher. Elizabeth Burnham, fifth grade teacher. Dorothy Van Kure, Van Kure was our speech, is our speech pathologist, and Michael E. Coma is the director of the FAFS Center, and he's our, our community representative. I'd like to start by highlighting some of the year's events and activities that we have accomplished this year. For building maintenance, we did some painting, some repairs on the swings and the slide. We remulched the playground, which needed a whole bunch of mulch, so we were happy about that. We accomplished our first safety drill for the, for the entire district, and that was great for Dale Street, because we had a few issues, and we've addressed those, and looking forward to practicing some more of those as the years go on. In terms of technology, for the building, we have Wi-Fi now in nine classrooms and two special education rooms. We have 10 rooms that still do not have it, but we're hoping that, not next year, but the following year, we will complete the entire building. We received a grant from the MCPE for iPads, and so we're working with those as well. And I'll talk a little bit about those a little further on with professional development. In terms of assessments, Dale Street started some, some major common assessments. We are doing the benchmark assessment system. So, this year, we trained teachers on how to administer the test. It's a reading test, and they chose three students in each of their classrooms and practiced three times this year, and the fifth grade used that as their goal. And we're hoping to get three, at least three benchmarks for the year to show growth, and I'm happy to say that most of those were met. And fourth grade, we started with Star Math this year as well, a Star Math assessment, which we gave throughout K through five, first grade through five, three times this year. We're looking at that data and analyzing that, and we have been all year long. It's a, it's a process. We're excited about seeing our MCAS results and seeing how the Star Math matches. Star Math gives you a projection about whether or not where kids will lie in the MCAS testing, so we're, we're excited to see if that in fact matches up and, and how well our students did. But I was just actually creating a spreadsheet this morning with the results from the first test in the spring, based on each standard, so they're, they delineate it in Star, they take 12 standards and delineate it out that way. And I matched that with how they did it, the teachers did at the end of the year, and it's very interesting to see the growth. We have some areas that we started out at 97% and went to 100%. We have some areas where we started out at, I think the lowest was 17%, and because that, that's actually fractions, converting fractions, and that's new to the, the fifth grade, and ended up with a wide percentage. I can't remember off the top of my head what that was, but the growth was really there, and it's interesting, that's going to help inform our instruction for next year, so we're excited about. You know, if the kids already know it, we're not going to spend a lot of time on it, let's go on to what they don't know and spend more time on that. We implemented a new schedule this year as well. We have a block of time that has response to intervention, word language, and music lessons. So, kids, it really helped in terms of keeping that whole pull-out-push-in period available for students, and it really helped the blocks of time for reading and math, so that people, teachers, schedules weren't interrupted during those blocks of time. So, we had 90 minutes of ELA and then 60 minutes of math. Teachers were, were very happy with the way that it worked, so we're not tweaking it too much next year. It also, the other big thing that, that helped with was in terms of pull-out services, so if a child has speech or something that they normally would have been taken out of an academic time, now during that RTI block, we scheduled, almost all of those were taken care of during the RTI block, so kids never missed their core subject time. In terms of curriculum, with the help of the K through five math team, we implemented the ongoing revisions for the math curriculum map and worked with Shapali Fox, our math consultant, and lots of great conversations during our team meetings about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it, and what materials we're using. So, we're looking forward to that continuing this year, for next year as well. Our discussions for team meetings also included reading and our writing units as well. In terms of professional development, we had six sessions with our math consultant, Shapali Fox, and that was focused on unpacking the Common Core standards. Teachers collaborating to find ways to meet those standards, and it was really so powerful, they want her to come back next year, so we're excited about that. But an outprop of that work is to back it, back up the time that we spend with Shapali with some in-house job embedded days, so that teachers have time to further discuss what they learned with Shapali and pull it, bring that forward, because they go back to their classroom and they're teaching, and so there's never that collaboration, that time to meet with, meet with each other. So, we're going to build those in next year. And Donna and I and Dr. Peterson are going to create a And Donna and I and Dr. Peterson are going to create a K through five, we're going to work on coordinating that all together, so that will be, we're looking forward to that. Teacher evaluation, training for professional development, we had a lot of that early on so that we were clear about what we were, were doing this year with the new teacher evaluation. For the, for the benchmark assessment training, we worked on making sure, so the two reading specialists, Jamie Callahan and I, worked on training with the teachers, and then we mentored them all year long to, to make sure that we had consistency and continuity with scoring. We're going to actually work on that again next year. For professional development, we also had EdTech 21, six teachers were involved in that. We have a total now of over twenty-two teachers who have been through that training, so we're increasing our capacity there as well. We have a team of teachers that went to the Mass Reading Conference and another team of teachers that went to the National Science Conference. We were lucky to have that here in Boston this year, so we were able to send more than just a few, a couple. Our goals for next year, they're all going to be centered around consistency for curriculum. Our Writers Workshop, we implemented this year the, one unit from the Lucy Cockens Units of Study for Writers Workshop that implements the Common Core, and we will be doing three units in collaboration with the K through five literacy team that's being put together. And we will have the full implementation of the Benchmark Assessment System three times this year, this upcoming year, for teachers and testing students with that. In terms of math collaboration, we will be working on analyzing the data to inform instruction so that, working with the Star Math and what that tells us and how we will forward in terms of what MCAS tells us when we get those scores as well. And we'll be using technology as a tool for all students through the Google products that we're, we've been rolling out, iPads and interactive boards in the classroom. And another focus will be on parent communication and homework and consistency. And one more thing I just wanted to mention, we have revised the summer reading program. We usually choose one book for the entire school, and this year, we're choosing two books, one for each grade level. It's centered around, centered around our theme for the year. We have a theme, the Fish Philosophy theme. For next year, will be Make Their Day. And so these two books are similar, can be compared to each other, then we'll also be, teachers will also be reading a Read-A-Law book that will compare to the most, compare and contrast to those books as well, and that's part of the ELA Common Core. So we're hoping to build those conversations around books and get kids excited about them as well.
What books are you doing this year?
We are doing Rules for Fifth Grade and Granny Tortelli Makes Soup for Fourth Grade.
Can I ask a question about the Star Math? You talked about how the Star Math Assessment Benchmark will help predict, may help predict MCAS performance. Well, that, is it also tied to the PARC assessment, so, or we?
It is not. It, this is more, this is a nationally-normed test that gives you, it's all multiple choice, so it is, it is competency, and it also is, help me with the term. MCAS just gives you a, a set of questions. This tests the Star Math, so if I take a question one and say it's on fractions, and I do well on that question, it'll go to a higher, higher level. It'll keep going up till I...
It's intuitive.
Intuitive. There's another term, I can't think of it right off the top of my head, but that, so it gives you a picture of where kids are, but it's still just multiple choice. So the PARC piece of it that we need to do, that we really just need to keep, continue to work on building some application models. And so what we did in fourth grade, fourth grade's goal this year was to build their competency and conversions, so from small units to large units in measurement. And we built those, they built, teachers worked really hard to put some of those types of both capacity, capacity, volume, and length within the whole year, so the kids weren't just seeing it in like one unit. It was really applying it to each one of the domains as they were going through. We saw some real growth there, so we're hoping to continue to grow that as well.
Any other questions?
Just, excuse me, just a question for the RTI block. Now that you're having the kids all be in the classroom for that, so what are the kids that, that aren't having services? What are they doing, doing while the other kids are having their services in the classroom?
That's, that's been a challenge this year. Part of the reason is because at our school, we don't have a room for the language, the world language, when world language takes place. So for, on any given day, there's at least two Spanish classes and possibly a Mandarin class going on at the same time for a block of five, five, five members of the team, so five classrooms. And on those days, it's a challenge, like where are we even going to put people? And then, but we've had some very creative, our teachers are extremely creative and adaptive, and so we've been trying to work toward clustering, so if we have two rooms available, we cluster the kids as best we can, and they try, they're trying to differentiate as mu, as best as they can when, once we have, so the reading specialists have been pulling people out, the media, our librarian has been pulling groups of kids as well during the RTI time. And when we bring on the math specialists, we're hoping that person will be pulling kids not only for remediation, but also for extension as well. And teachers have been doing wonderful things. They mostly focused on math and that problem application piece of it. That's what they've been working on. So it might be something that, the other challenge is that you have a schedule for the week. So picture you have five classes, and of those five classes, kids get pulled for either language or music lessons. So the groups aren't true RTI groups, because usually you try to group them by ability and have to pull them, so they, I have to be creative in how they work with those students. It's a work in progress.
Thank you. Louise, I, I liked how you summed up your top three goals at the end, and I'm wondering if you can talk a bit more about the, the technology piece in terms of, I know you have some iPads, and I'm wondering if you could give us an example of how that's being used in the, in the classroom?
Okay, so we, by the time we got them and we got everything functional, it was the end of March, and so the technology team made a determination that we probably would be best served by having a few people use them and figure out how to use them best. And we talked mostly around digital citizenry. So how, what does this look like? You know, there's a, we're always concerned about kids getting into something they're not supposed to, and how do we, you know, make sure that everything is, is safe, and what does it look like in the classroom? What does that flipped classroom look like? And so teachers, we have four teachers who worked really hard this year on kind of ironing out the kinks, and we're actually working on, so next year, those four teachers, two of them were on one team and two of them are on another team this year. Next year, they're going to be, one of them will be on each team. So we split them apart so that, and we rearranged the teams so that there'd be one expert on each team, and we're hoping that the...
Teams, you mean by grade level?
Grade level.
Okay.
So each grade level is split into two teams. And so there are, so there'll be one expert on each of the teams. And we're trying to figure out the best way, whether it's, we know that we have to do some of that digital citizenry, whether it's teaming teachers together, like one of the experts with another teacher, and they, she collaborates with that person and teaches the digital citizenry. Also, our media specialist is working with them now so that she's going to do some of that as well, so we can get that going as quickly as we possibly can, and then figure out how best to manage and rotate so everybody gets an opportunity to use the iPads. Still in the process of working all the kinks out of that, too.
Thanks, Louise.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure to come here every year to talk to you about something so special to me, and that's WeLock School. It's a pleasure to come and share some of the highlights. I'm sure as you reviewed our school improvement documents, you noted they are quite, they are quite thick. We have accomplished a great deal at our schools this year. I want to talk about for a second all of the initiatives that we complete year after year. It's so important that we are involved with many, many initiatives. Some come from the state, some are internally driven, but I think one of the things that's become really clear to me as, as I've been a principal, is that it isn't how many initiatives you undertake, it's doing them really well. So as I talk about my school and our initiatives, you're going to, you're going to see two things that I think are important. One, as I talk about goals for next year, there'll be a continuation of a lot of the things we're working on this year, but also, I think you're going to be really pleased to hear a consistent thread. One of the goals for Medfield is to become consistent pre-K to twelve, and I think as you hear what we've been working on at WeLock, I was listening to Mrs. Snyder, it's really connected, and, and I think that's, that's a great direction to be heading in. So I'd like to continue and tell you a little bit about some areas I'm going to highlight. I'm going to highlight tonight the area of writing, math, world language, and technology. And as I do so, information about facilities and professional development are embedded in those topics. So in the area of writing, we were really pleased this year that, last year, Jamie Callahan, I, ELA coordinator, and a great team of WeLock teachers worked to update the writing curriculum maps with the Common Core standards. We were also able to purchase the new Lucy Cockens Units of Studies, which were also aligned to the Common Core. So this year was our first implementation year, and it was a great year implementing the maps, and I think one of the best parts of it was providing teachers with the supports that they needed to carry on this instruction. Jamie embedded a lot of professional development throughout the year for the teachers, and I think that's really important about professional development. A one-time professional development opportunity is great, but it really, you know, if you leave it behind and that's all you have, that's not going to build capacity, that's not going to allow for, you know, the fruition of the program to really meet its potential. And this year, our teachers worked hard with their, with, with Jamie in regard to implementing the units of study. The other piece was that we were able to implement common writing assessments. So we implemented each term, a common prompt for the students with rubrics. And while WeLock's done it in the past, we were able to revisit looking at student work. So Jamie and I provided some professional development regarding protocols for carrying out that work, and we were able, after the first term common assessment, to get together and develop exemplars for each of the prompts. So by the end of this year, our teachers are going to end the year with a binder of exemplars, which are model papers or model examples of each of the assessment criteria. So in a rubric that was based on a four is the highest, a three is proficient, a two and a one, we created exemplars for each of those grades, so to speak, so that when they're grading papers in the future and they're, they're using the rubric and they're examining student work, they can bump it up against the exemplar that the entire team decided upon, say, what's a two, and they have a great handle on that grading. So it's really a wonderful way to be consistent. We started that work this year, and I know for next year, we're going to be continuing that work, and I know that Jamie's going to be providing even more support to them as we go through that process. In the area of mathematics, like Louise, we also participated with Shapali Fox in professional development. This was our second year of implementing math, writing, writing curriculum, math curriculum maps, excuse me, and the teachers basically were fine-tuning and tweaking the maps the second year, participating in the professional development with Shapali Fox, and we were also beginning to analyze student work. Because math is such an important subject, and you know nationally, it's an area that across the country, people want to see us raise achievement, the teachers really focused on math a great deal in addition to the writing, and really began to look closely at student work, and they chose mathematics for their goals. So we've always used the MCAS to, you know, give us a heads-up longitudinally, how are we doing in different topics in mathematics? What are the standards? Where we shine? What are the standards that we need to do a little more work? And this year, our teachers, you know, looking at that information, selective standard and area where we wanted to develop. And so basically, that became the teacher's goal for our educator evaluation system, and it was also my goal to raise math achievement at WeLock. So it was really nicely intertwined between using the, the professional development information they gathered from Shapali Fox and then looking at student work, really deconstructing math problems, identifying and drilling down to how many children got, got number five correct? Why did they get it wrong? What other answer did they choose? Really provided them with many opportunities to look at student work. And then we also were participating with Star Math, which we enjoyed. We participated in the three benchmarking periods, September, January, and May, where we got a picture of where our students were performing. We did find it to align pretty well with our expectations, and when you bumped it against classwork and classroom assessments, it was pretty valid. I mean, there's always going to be a fluke on those assessments when it's a one-shot, but we thought there were, it was pretty valid in a lot of ways. We enjoyed using it. And we also implemented data analysis days. So after every benchmarking period, I met with the triads. We have groups of three teachers in our school broken down from our grade levels of nine, and we would meet and really go through the data, how their children performed. We'd really talk about, you know, did you feel that was a true picture of the child's performance? And it led to talking, conversations about strategies, areas of strength, areas of need, who needs interventions. So it, they were rich discussions, and I think they were pretty beneficial. I'd like to continue that as well next year. This was the first year for world language at WeLock School, and we implement, implemented Mandarin and Spanish, and we, we were really pleased with the program. And as you can imagine, in the first year, it is a work in progress. You have a lot to learn. You have to really figure things out logistically, but I think at the end of the day, we were very pleased with the program. This year, Mandarin was on the stage, and next year, because we have a classroom available, Mandarin will be moving to a regular classroom, which I'm very happy about. As far as the program itself, I think the boys and girls really benefited, not only from the language, but from the cultural exposure. I think the teachers worked really hard to make it engaging for this age group. They played a lot of games, they played a lot of music, and the vocabulary was meaningful to the children of this age group. So I thought that the takeaway was very effective, and we're looking forward to working on this again next year. And one of the things we hope to do is reach out a little sooner to Memorial School and maybe have the teachers come to Memorial and do a presentation on what they can, what the kids can expect for Mandarin and Spanish before parents help their children make the selection. So I think that will be a nice step to increase communication. They did have a website, they did communicate with the families, but I think those are things we're going to work on for next year. We also, in teaching Mandarin and Spanish, it was part of our intervention block at WeLock, which looks a little different than at Dale Street School because we didn't have to incorporate music and other specials into that time. So at WeLock, when children had those five periods of intervention during the week, they were either with their teacher or with one of the language teachers. So teachers did have several periods where they could work with the boys and girls, and we tried as well to schedule the specialists during those blocks, but it didn't work all the time just because of everyone's schedules and the number of children that might have a need. They all couldn't fit. So we, we, we managed, we were very flexible with it. And also, our goal was that, you know, in the perfect world, when, when, after we've done this a while, we're really hopeful that, you know, a lot of our teachers did collaborate very well. Some were able to mix students between the three classes in their triad to provide different types of interventions. But also, we too want to enrich our children and extend. So that is an area of challenge, and what we need to learn more about, what can we do to enrich and extend our children during that intervention time? So we were, we felt very good about, about that work this year. And finally, the area of technology is an area where I'm very excited and very proud. We're very grateful to the MCPE and our CSA and our district for allowing us to move forward with a vision for the elementary, a vision for WeLock School. Last summer, I had the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Marsden, Owen O'Quirrell, collaborated with Diane Horvath, our tech integration specialist, and Dorothy Freewald, our tech assistant, and our teachers. And we really looked at, you know, where are we going at WeLock? What do we want to do? Last year, we were fortunate to get Elmos, technology carts, laptops, digital projectors in every classroom. The teachers made great use... The teachers made great use of that, you know, really did a great job utilizing all of those items and really a great grant for us to start our journey. This year, we were really interested in iPads. So we sat down and we kind of crafted a three-year vision for WeLok. And I'm so thrilled that I think we're going to finish it in next year, which would be the second year. So for the first part of the vision, we were hoping to add to what we had acquired last year, some iPads. So we did, in the first phase of our grant, which was over a $15,000 grant, we were able to acquire iPads for our teachers, which was fantastic. They began using them, using many different apps, trying to integrate it into technology. You know, I think we've shared many of those projects, whether they be on our website or we've had them out there, and we can talk a little bit about that. But after we started that, and then we also had a group set of about eight that the teachers could borrow to use with the boys and girls. Well, I think the enthusiasm was so great for this that we started talking about perhaps we need more this year, which was not in the first phase of our grant, which basically was eventually that we would not only have iPads for all our teachers, we would have two iPad carts, 25 and 25 iPads, one for upstairs, one for downstairs. So after we began to go wireless, which also was accomplished this year, we were very proud of that. We didn't anticipate being fully wireless for another year. We went back to the table and said, maybe we can go back to the coalition and see if we can move up part of the grant. And we did. We kind of moved into year two, which was to acquire a class set and an iPad cart. And we did go back to the coalition, and that was very, very successful. At the same time, the CSA became very open to participating with us as a district and with the MCPE. And we've acquired Apple TVs for our classrooms. So at this point in time, we have, our teachers have the iPads, they're using them in instruction. We have a class set of iPads for the children, for teachers to take out and utilize. We have acquired Apple TVs, which are going into the classrooms. Our building is wireless. And in our budget through the district, we have some of the Epson projectors, which are the short throw projectors that we would really like to have to kind of pull it all together. So I guess what remains is that second cart for upstairs with another 25 iPads. And I really think we're on our way. So we're very grateful to the district, the coalition, and the CSAs for all of their support for our school. And I think we've had several examples of the utilization of these materials. Today, we were in an assembly for our June Good Character, the topic was citizenship. And one of the teachers showcased her Big Six project, and they used ChatterPicks. So you had, that is the app where the inanimate objects can, their mouths can move. So it was really adorable, and the kids got to use the iPads and learned how to use that app. We've also used video through the iPads, that we did a wonderful video, Mr. Keel's class with Ms. Graziano did the Be Brave video, which I think many people have seen, that we were very proud of. So, you know, all in all, I think we've had a great year at WeLok. It's been very busy. There are many initiatives. We participated in educator evaluation. I think that it was a wonderfully collaborative and flexible process for Medfield. And I know that that too is a work in progress, but I think collaboratively with our union leadership and our superintendent and your support, I think we're on our way. So next year, our goals are basically to continue our work in the area of writing. We're going to be continuing the professional development for our teachers. We're going to continue to look at student work to inform our instruction. I know Ms. Callahan is also thinking about, we're looking at the area of reading and revisiting our curriculum maps to ensure that alignment to the Common Core. So they'll be beginning that work. In the area of mathematics, we also will be continuing with Shapali Fox. And I loved how she surveyed our teachers to really get their feedback on what the next steps should be. So we'll be continuing to explore resources for our mathematics program. And in the area of technology, I think I alluded to some of our next steps. And then increasing that capacity for our teachers. We're very fortunate to have Diane Horvath, who's been providing many professional development opportunities for our teachers before school, during lunch, dedicated time, half-days, et cetera. And we want to continue providing that support in professional development for our teachers. We also are going to Google products, Google the email. We're working, we're moving into Aspen. So we have a lot in the area of technology, and we need to provide that support to our teachers because, you know, we're all in this together. And I think we're in great shape at WeLok, and I'm very much looking forward to this continued work next year. So, any questions?
Oh, sorry, I have a quick question. What is the walking club? I saw that in here. I was like, what is that?
That was something that I would like to have at WeLok.
Oh, that's a goal.
It's a goal.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
It's in our... Are you, okay. So in my previous positions as principal, other schools I've been involved with had walking clubs. And they provide a really neat opportunity for children who may not be those kids who like to participate in team sports at recess. And it just gives another alternative to encourage physical fitness and activity. And it was a really great collaborative program where parent volunteers, maybe would provide them with hole punches and cute little cards for the children. And so every time they walked a designated lap that you laid out, they'd get a hole punch. When they earned so many hole punches, they'd get one of those little feet. So it was very cute. They would have like their little necklace or a little bracelet where they put their feet. And then at the end of the year, we would recognize those children who participated in the club. So it was just a nice little addition to recess because I think we're always trying to find different ways to engage the boys and girls at recess. So it's a goal.
Great, thank you.
Other than wall ball, though? I love that. I love the walking club. That's cute.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be, and a surprise to be back here yet again. I think that it's important to note that a lot of things I'm going to touch on very briefly because you've heard them from the other two elementary principals. Because one of our goals, I think that we've all striven for over the last several years, is to really break down the separation between the three buildings and have it more of a continuum than, you know, as more than just steps, that things are flowing from one level to the next. At Memorial School, we have a pledge. If you walk in the lobby, you'll see it mounted on the wall, and I'll read it to you. I think most people know it. At Memorial School, we believe everyone belongs, everyone learns, everyone grows, and everyone gives. This is not just a pledge that hangs on the wall. Our get-along gatherings that we hold monthly, one of the parts of the get-along gathering is reviewing the pledge, and the children talk about it around whatever the theme is, whether it's friendship or problem solving. It's, okay, how do we tie that into the things we believe about our school? The only thing I would add to the pledge, as you might notice, I am a fan of Disney and Walt Disney, is I would kind of steal words from Walt Disney when he opened up Disneyland many years ago and put them over the front door of Memorial School that simply say, "Welcome to this happy place." And I think if it's one thing that characterizes that building, it is a happy place. It's a very child-centric building, but at the same time, very conscious of the changes in children, in expectations, and that it's not just building up children's self-confidence, but building up children's self-confidence through achievement. And our teachers work very hard to see that all children achieve. And we've been very proud of what we've been seeing from our benchmarks this year in all areas. This has been a transitional year for Memorial School as Andrea Trasher retired last summer and the new principal, Dr. Peterson, isn't beginning until July 1st. But it's a testament to the staff at Memorial that through all of these changes, they've never lost sight of the goal. Their primary goal, which is to provide with the children with a wide range of experiences that help to foster academic skills, basic life skills, and positive self-concepts based on accomplishments. In many ways, Memorial is the foundation for all of the other plans that you've heard over the last several weeks. If we don't get our job right, we make their job so much harder. And I have to say, and I'm not taking this credit, this goes to Andrea and her predecessors and the staff at that building. I think they get it right. If you look at the plan that you have before you, as my peers have suggested, there are some common themes that run through, and that's mathematics, literacy, technology for supporting the curriculum. And the other important part is in our social thinking curriculum. We only, we don't want to just have good students, we want to have good people. And that's one of the keys, the social thinking curriculum that weaves its way through the elementary grades. In technology, like the other two levels, we've been very fortunate to have the support of the CSA and MCPE to purchase, in our case, iPads for classroom use, one in each classroom, and then a set in the library. We do not have Wi-Fi throughout the building, so to put classroom sets right now would not be very sensible. But we do have an iPad set in the library, and the librarian has been working with first grade teachers on their inquiry-based, what they call I-wonder projects, in which the students use the iPads to do their research. We have, again, through CSA, purchased a child-friendly database, which is called PebbleGo. And it's sort of prescreens of a lot of what's on the internet. So what the children get on their iPads have already been prescreened to be appropriate to the grade level. And it begins with that question of a child, "I wonder." And this year's the first time that we did that. And if you go on to Memorial's site and you go to the librarian page, you can see that Randy Grodin has put together a fantastic website. And on that, she has samples of some of the I-wonder projects that the children have worked on. And this is in collaboration with the first grade teachers. And I believe you've heard of the Big Six. This is part of the Big Six program. We kind of shrink it down a little bit because six is a lot for a first grader sometimes. But by centering around this project-based idea of I-wonder, it gave the children a focus, and I think it has really made a big difference this year. Like my comrades, there's been a lot of professional development that's been given to the staff this year in the area of technology. And again, our goal is not to learn technology, but to integrate that into our curriculum where it will be the most effective. You know, having an iPad for something that's better done with paper and pencil, we're going to be using paper and pencil. But there are some opportunities that the iPad gives us, or any kind of technology like that, that allows an individual student, excuse me, to kind of explore a little bit when, you know, the main class may be focused on one area, this child, you know, we don't teach what they already know. And when a child's in a classroom that knows how to do some things, and we have a number of students this year that probably could be doing mathematics with third and fourth graders, but the iPad has allowed them to kind of go exploring off in very challenging directions. And on the other side of that coin is students that are struggling a little bit. It gives them a nonjudgmental way to kind of review some basic facts that they need to help them to move on forward. In the future, in the technology area, it's summed up in three phrases that we have written in the plan. We want to improve and deepen student inquiry by developing new ways for students to plan, locate and organize information, collaborate with others, and share their knowledge. Secondly, to expand students' knowledge about how they can use technology. And lastly, to provide a rich variety of multimedia content to students to support their learning, to increase their understanding, and to provide for differentiation. So those are the things that we'll be looking at in this upcoming year. In the area of curriculum, again, literacy, which encompasses reading and writing, mathematics, have been two of our goals in K and in 1. We also have Lucy Cockens in first grade this year, where every grade took one of the units and worked on it. They also worked on developing the map and the rubrics so that in September, they're full war into that program. Meanwhile, kindergarten will begin next year to do what first grade was doing, so that they get introduced to the program, they test out just one of the areas, work on the maps and the rubric. So the following year, we'll pretty much have a seamless program going K right through five. I should mention, I think some people are aware of this, probably the biggest initiative we have next year is full-day kindergarten. And if you look at the plan, you'll see that in the area of curriculum, we kind of divided it out that way, what the goals of kindergarten are going to be next year, what the goals of first grade are going to be next year. And for kindergarten, we want everyone to understand that full-day kindergarten is just not longer time to do the same things. Full-day kindergarten provides unique opportunities to really expand children's learning. And the kindergarten teachers have begun that work. They've visited schools that have full-day kindergarten, were able to sit down and talk to those teachers about what it means, so they get a better understanding on that. And the other part of our goal is for people to understand that while the half-day program will not be the same as full-day, that's impossible. The core of the half-day program will be the same as the core of the full-day program. They will be exposed to writing, they just won't have as much opportunity as you'll have in a full-day program. They will be having the same math program, the same reading program. So the core will be the same. And for many children, with the help that they get through their families and opportunities outside, that's going to be fine. We've also started Star Math. Star Math starts with grade one because it assumes 100-word vocabulary in order to take the test. So our first graders don't start the test until mid-year. They've taken it twice, mid-year and then again toward the end of the school year. And the benefit for us is it allows the teachers to dig down. It's not just a score, because a score can cover up weaknesses. It allows us to dig down, okay, student might be above grade level, but as you dig down into what happened in that test, here's an area where they stopped after one question because they didn't get that question right, or two questions they didn't get. So here's an area that the teachers can plan and the information that will go forward as they go to second grade. These are areas where this child is very strong, these are areas that the test indicates in our own daily practice has indicated to us is an area a child needs to work on, rather than every year, you know, looking at us, okay, they're above grade level, that's fine, and then finding out that there are these pockets where if we can address them early enough, it's going to eliminate lots of problems. We also did work with DRA and running records in kindergarten this year and made it a key assessment for them, which they started in January. And they've been using the running record to inform their groupings, even in kindergarten for reading. And the result of that is we're seeing that the goal they set for themselves as a child would be at least two reading levels above the level they began the year with. And essentially, we can say that over 80% of kindergarten has met that goal, 95% of kindergarten has met the grade level benchmark. And we have a small core of students, majority of whom are on IEPs, but they've made progress from where they were, they just have not quite made benchmark. But with the information that we have now, when those children go to first grade, we don't have to begin that testing process. We know where their strengths are, where their weaknesses are, we can start from day one to address those. And the hope is that by the time they leave us to go to WeLok... And the hope is that by the time they leave us to go to Wheelock, we'll have all of our first graders leaving first grade on or above the benchmark. Okay. Mathematics, we did have the consultant working with our teachers as well. And one of our goals in Memorial for next year is to start beginning to work with guided math, which is very similar to guided reading, in the sense that there'll be, there's an initial instruction that's given by the teacher, and then the teacher becomes one of the stations that the children work their way through. There are activities that will support the concept that they're working on. It may be on the iPad, it may be a station where they're integrating reading, writing, and mathematics. And it's one of the goals to fully integrate that next year. They began the work this year, and we should be seeing that in kindergarten and in first grade next year. And we do have the consultants coming back next year, and the nice thing is, she already knows that's what our teachers are interested in. So we're looking forward to having some real benefits from that. In the area of student life, I think the biggest change that we've seen this year was the introduction of our social thinking curriculum. And if you walk into Memorial, you'll see signs of it around the room, the building and in the classrooms. And what this curriculum does is it gives the students the power to deal with their own issues. Children learn to identify level one, level two, level three problems, and think about level one, level two, level three responses. And as this vocabulary has been taught to the children, we've seen some remarkable changes in behavior. We had one particular student at the beginning of the year that would disengage from everything right from the beginning, and it would take an hour, two hours to get him back into the classroom. Now, if it happens at all, it takes about five minutes. Because he's internalized that vocabulary, he's, in a sense, empowered himself. The idea that, you know, you're talking about, well, this is only a level one problem. What was your response? I was there one day and he was a level three. And said, "Well, what should have you been here for, level one?" And it's just, but before, you couldn't break down that wall, but now that vocabulary exists. And our goal in next year is not only to have the teachers and the students trained, but anyone in the school who works with the children will be trained in this social thinking curriculum. So the custodians, the ladies in the cafeteria, most of the aides have been trained, eventually, even the bus drivers, if we can give them that vocabulary. Of course, the kids will be shocked if the bus driver turns around and says, "That's a level one problem." And, you know, it's just this tie-in. And also, one of the things, and I've talked to Dr. Peterson about this already, is that in September, one of the things at our parent information night will be to introduce the parents to this social thinking curriculum so they can begin to learn this vocabulary and use it. In some cases, we have some parents that have already started using it at home, and they've seen a difference. Because it's a very, excuse me, child-friendly approach, and it does empower children to deal with their own behavior, rather than simply always having an adult telling them that's not the right way to do things. Getting them to understand that it's not the right way to do things, and there's something that they can do to change it. I'm not going to go through too much more of this. I think you all have read it. You know, the initiatives you've heard from everyone else are existing at Memorial School. I think it's an exciting time for the school. They're going to have some stability now going forward, that hopefully Dr. Peterson will be with us for many years. I think she's a great choice for the school. The teachers are excited. We visited her school one day, and it was very interesting to have her current staff tell her future staff how lucky they were to have her coming over. And the nice thing about that is, it wasn't planned. You know, the people were being very genuine. And those teachers came back and shared it with the other teachers and said, "I think we got really lucky here." So, and I think we have. So I think with Dr. Marsen's leadership and the team that he's been building, the people that are here, I expect that, I'm going to be reading in retirement about many great things. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them anyway.
Thank you so much for your commitment to Medfield over these last couple of years, too. It's been great.
I have to say, it's been fun. I feel like I've been grandfather to over 300 kids.
We didn't, we didn't have a plaque for Dr. Quigley, but this is the, well, for me, the fourth time I've said goodbye to Ed.
I know.
And every time I do, he seems to come back again. So I won't say goodbye, and it's not because I don't want to see him again, but because he's helped us through some tremendously difficult times, and we really appreciate how willing you've been to step in and be here. Other than Matt, you're the longest-tenured administrator in the district in the room, and you've never actually had.
Well, that'll change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of committee, I think what you've heard tonight is there's a lot of great things going on in the elementary schools. Teachers are working very hard, principals are working hard, and it's really exciting, exciting time, and look forward to some great things coming out of the schools. I thank the principals and Matt also for coming to see you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We won't hold it against you if you sneak out the back.
I'd find out who won the soccer game.
We had minutes that we didn't take up at the start, but I mean, you weren't here for that meeting. Do you want to table them and that Mary Ann take them up?
That's up to you if you want to.
Did you review them? You want to go through?
No, I wasn't at that meeting, so that's why.
So why don't we table those minutes?
Okay.
Dr. Marsen.
Under all business, we have a bus contract update. As we talked about in our last meeting, I've tried to schedule a meeting with the bus company to discuss the year two and three contract, in which we're looking at the price differential between a two-tier and a three-tier system. And if you remember, that came in exactly the same amount, it didn't make a lot of sense to us. So I do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at 2:00 with the bus company. I just got confirmation on that before our meeting here. So Tim had mentioned that he might want to attend that meeting. I know, Mary Ann, you had reached out as well, that if you were available. So you can tell me after the meeting if you're available, but I just want to really sit down with them and try to get a sense of the thinking behind that process and how we got to the same price with the two-tier and three-tier. Because if we're going to be working with a group of teachers and parents next year to look at scheduling and look at a way that we can get a two-tier system in Medfield, you would think that you would save some money along the way. And I think that one of the things that we need to look at is, can you do a two-tier system with the current number of buses, and do we have to add another bus? So in my mind, I would think that if you need to add additional buses to make that work, then doesn't that factor into the cost as, if we're going to reduce it by 50,000, say, and we pay 50,000 a bus, doesn't that make sense to be the swap there? Because they're supposed to decide the pricing, some of the criteria they use are fuel and maintenance of buses. Well, if you're losing 30 routes a day times 180, I would think that your fuel cost, maintenance cost would go way down. So that's kind of the conversation I want to have with them tomorrow. Actually, the owner of the bus company, Mr. Conley, is coming, so kind of get a sense of where he's at with this as well.
So is he coming to Medfield tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
He is. So I'll be sure to give you folks an update on that.
See this whole bidder?
He was.
So you don't have to open it back up if you make changes?
No. But what we would, I mean, that's our option, we talked about it at last meeting and before, is to either work it out with Conley Bus Company now or to rebid everything again this summer, which I don't think is something we want to do at this point of the year. It's pretty late to do that, but I think we can come to some compromise on that, that cost, and see where we are with that. So I'll update you as soon as I hear.
I can make tomorrow's meeting at, too.
Okay.
At your office.
Yes.
Okay.
Superintendent Tenet's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. The state testing for 2014, 2015. If you remember, earlier in the fall, we discussed that the state was going to give us an option as a school district to stay with MCAS for one more year or to transition to Park for next year, 2014, 2015. Leadership team and I have had numerous conversations on this. We feel that it's beneficial to stay with MCAS one more year. Couple of reasons with that. Certainly, the data I shared with you earlier in the year where you get the student growth information from teachers, I think that's really important data to have conversations around, you know, student achievement and practice and what's best practice. We wouldn't get that information if we went to Park this year. So the fact that our students have taken MCAS before, there's a level of comfortability there for the kids to take the assessment. They know what it looks like, they know that it's paper and pencil, it's not on a computer. So we feel that what we've been doing instructionally matches very well with MCAS. I think MCAS probably has about 30% of the questions that are Common Core-related right now. So they've made the transition a couple of years ago to incorporate Common Core curriculum into the MCAS. If we were to go to Park, first of all, we don't have the technology right now to do that because most of those tests are computer-based, and we don't have the lab structure or the one-to-one, per se, all through the district to do that. We, other districts have, were pilot schools, Burlington was one, they have every bit of technology that any school district in America could ever want. The superintendent did a presentation to all the superintendents a couple of weeks ago. They still had a lot of issues, a lot of issues to work on, a lot of bugs that would frustrate students in talking to O&amp;O Corp. We didn't, we don't have that infrastructure ready right now to do that. The other piece is that the Board of Education has not voted on that to be our test yet. That we piloted it in the Wheelock School this year, so we did that at the Wheelock in Blake and also the high school. You know, we had some issues with that as well. Normally, I like to kind of be upfront on this stuff. My former district, we were upfront with Etavale, we're race to the top district, we did a lot of work with that. This one doesn't feel right. So we're not sure where it's going, whether it's actually going to be approved or whether or not the state is going to come through with some funds to get the infrastructure for all schools. So in Medfield, we don't have the infrastructure to do it. And we're doing one-to-one in one whole building and BYOD in another building, yet we can't support that. There are many districts around here that aren't even where we are in technology. So how are they going to support it? So it doesn't make sense from our perspective that we would go to Park next year, that we would wait one more year, see what develops at the state level, see if it's approved, and then get our infrastructure ready to do that assessment in 16, 17. But I would ask that, if you do agree with me with that recommendation that you vote to approve that, the state has asked us to have school committee approval and to submit something by June 30th, whether or not we want to go to MCAS or Park. If we do nothing, if you don't vote on this tonight and we do nothing, they will assign us MCAS. But we feel that it's important statewide, it's about 50/50. It's really right down the middle where people are going, some are going to Park, some, most are staying with that. It's really something.
So how are they supporting it?
Well, I mean, there's lots of places that have that infrastructure.
There was an article this week in the Globe that a lot of, I mean, wasn't it like 70% don't have?
That don't have it. There's a feeling out there where they feel, okay, let's go through and have our kids do it this one time, and the state is going to hold them harmless. So when we look at whether or not you get a different rating, whether you're a level one, level two, or level three school, if you take Park this year, you're held harmless. So if you are a level three or four school, there's actually an incentive to take Park because you can't get, you can't get lower delineations, level two, based on your test scores. So there's kind of that incentive if you're a level three or four. You know, certainly, we're not there, so there's no incentive for us to do that. I would say that it's pretty mixed even with a level one in two districts out there. Some have the infrastructure, some don't. You know, we're, as you heard tonight, we're still working at implementing the Common Core here. We're not fully implemented with that yet. So I'd hate to have our kids be tested on curriculum they haven't been exposed to or learned yet. So I think that one year additional gives us a little more time to plan, also to see what's getting rolled out statewide, and also get feedback from other districts that are going into it in 14, 15, and see what we need to do structurally, technology-wise. You know, the kids need to get comfortable on the device that they're taking the test on. They can't just take the test on the device on that first time. They need to have some work on that, too. So we're just not there yet, that's the feeling. So I would ask that you would vote to allow us to MCAS 14, 15, and then see what develops in 14, 15.
So the superintendent's recommendation is to use the MCAS assessment for the 2014, 2015 school year. Is there a motion in support of that recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you. And just a couple of things on district recognition. We had a wonderful graduation a couple Sundays ago, very well attended, and our kids were really, really did a nice job with the speeches. It was just fantastic. So we had a great day for that, a little warm, but we all survived. And I'd also like to recognize the boys' lacrosse team that won the state championship on Saturday. For the sixth time, they've won the state championship, and just a great group of kids that work real hard, and I know that this one really means a lot, so I want to congratulate all of them.
This is the time we set aside for public input. To no avail. Dr. Marsen, do you have any items for the future agenda? We don't meet again until September, is that right?
No, August 25th.
August 25th.
Which is the first day the teachers come back.
All right. Anything else from the committee?
Nothing.
I want to thank Mary Ann and Tim for representing us at graduation, and Tim for giving an inspiring speech under difficult circumstances.
And Anna May was there, too.
Were you there, too? Great. I was not, that's how I didn't know.
That was a beautiful graduation. Those speakers were fantastic.
As Jeff said, one word to sum it up, impressive. And the graduation was impressive, the speeches were phenomenal.
It was a great day. It was a nice culmination of a lot of years of work for those kids, so it was great.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.